Tuesday, February 14th, 2023, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. And Happy Valentine's Day. Since the governor has ordered that flags be placed at half-mast, and since we're all a united community in the state of Michigan, three residents in the state of Michigan were killed yesterday at Michigan State University, and five others were injured. So I thought we should have a moment of silence for those family members, the parents, the brothers and sisters, the fellow students, the Michigan State community. Because as a parent with three children, I can't imagine the sorrow and anguish that all those family members would be experiencing. So a moment of silence. So thank you, let's proceed. So as a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board, and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief, on point, and non-repetitive to anything else that's been shared. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board. It's not determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. So I'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
So I'll need a motion to approve the minutes from the January 10th meeting.
So moved.
Support.
So I move in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll now call the first case, Item 1T 2406 Heronwood. So you were here as before, so...
Excuse me, Brian? If you just want to identify the five...
Yeah, I was just gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
So you were here as before, so only five members can vote on this matter. So that's Tom, Jocelyn, Bob, myself, and Scott.
Hi, I'm Jason. On behalf of Keldoon Terrabin and Ree McAid. Ree is here with me. I'm from JCB Design and Build, 801 South Adams Road, Birmingham, Michigan. The plan up there is actually the old plan that we brought in front of you guys last time. Do we have...
We can put it up. That was...
As you've reconfigured this, we have a pool. There was an encroachment into the side yard setback that you've reduced to three feet.
Yes, sir. Originally, the encroachment was six feet. We've reduced that to now three feet.
I'm presuming you gave us a hard copy?
I have a copy as well.
I'm sorry about that?
No.
I don't wanna zoom out anymore. Oh, there we go.
Yep.
Can I borrow your little pointer?
Yep. Just have to hit that red button there.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we had reconfigured this side right here. This is where the encroachment is. You can see we have this line right here showing what the encroachment is. This is the setback line. This is the encroachment. We have three foot. Originally, this was six foot, so it was out over here. And we're hoping that the board will approve this and let us proceed.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public hearings. Anyone here that'd like to comment? Approach the podium. State your name and address.
We're Joe and Diane Walsh, 2410 Heronwood Drive. And we're the neighbor...
I remember you spoke at the last meeting and we have your letter.
I did. And I'm not used to a mic, so... Sorry about that. I did send a letter to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We continue to object to this plan. When we... At the November meeting when we were here, there were 19 proposals for the board to look at. Eighteen were approved. And what I noticed, because I've not been to these before, the approvals typically said...
So the approvals are sort of confined to the facts in front of us? So just confine your comments to this particular request?
I shall.
Yep.
The proposal shouldn't affect... I'm changing the wording here a little bit to meet your comment. The proposal shouldn't adversely affect any adjacent homeowners. This does adversely affect us. Secondly, the proposed exceptions should not... Should be addressing an issue in the lots. There's no issue here. This is a desire to encroach into this open area. And I'll also add for the board that it's gonna be very visible. They want lights on it that will accentuate the exception to the standard in our homeowners association. And there was some confusion last time. There are no other structures like this in our neighborhood. Fifty-three homes. We walked the neighborhood yesterday on a beautiful day. What may have confused people is there are a few decks behind homes where the entrance to the deck shuts out onto the driveway, so you can see it from the front. But it's nothing like what's proposed here. Those are my comments.
Thanks very much. So anyone else would like to speak?
Diane Walsh, 2410.
So just provide any comments that are different from your husband.
Right. The only... And that's why it came up. I thought, let's see what Joe says.
You have an addendum, because he forgot something you told him to say.
So don't do that.
Okay.
No. My thought is this. The township ordinances state that pools should be directly behind the home, from my discussion with the ordinance people here. Our bylaws, and I'm no longer on the board. I got off in December. Stayed the same thing. And I realize you don't make a decision based on that, and I understand that. But this is totally on the side of the house. And it will affect what we see and what we hear. We do believe that it could affect, would affect, can't prove it, our property values. And it is different than anything else in the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else like to speak? State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Patenga. I live at 2384 Heronwood Drive. I'm an adjacent neighbor. But I also represent the township or our subdivision Board of Directors. And I'd like you to just know at least three cardinal reasons why I'm speaking tonight. One, the residence in question here has been a significant contributor to the success of our subdivision, so it's nothing personal. They've had roles and responsibilities in the subdivision, and they voted along with us on issues that have come to our attention. But this particular issue is in conflict with our Board of Directors' guidance regarding where swimming pools and things of that nature should be located. The rule for that emanated from the township's own guidance. Your code of conduct and relationship to location recommends the rear yard, not the side yard. To approve this means there would be precedent setting for our subdivision, because all other pools, there are at least six of them in our subdivision, all located in the rear yard. Two, it has a potential negative impact to the adjacent neighbors who just spoke, because the property values potentially are affected. Who knows exactly what? But mostly in conflict with our own guidance. Would have to be redrafted and revisited. We met and deliberated as a board within our subdivision. We all met unanimously, six votes, not to support this because of its location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
I have a question for Mr. Patenga.
Okay, sorry.
Dr. Patenga?
Oh, sir, I'm sorry.
Dr. Patenga, I'm wondering... I'm looking at the layout here, and I'm wondering where they would put a pool in the rear yard? Because it looks to me like there's a setback issue in the back as well.
Well, basically, what's happened over the years is that they've added to their home, and consequently, they're landlocked. That circle you see at the back, the rear there, is an outdoor... They could probably tell you specifically, maybe that's gonna be the new waterfall or sitting tub. But the existing patio has been added on to, so basically, they're landlocked. They have no other land location that they can build a pool on except to put it on the side yard, or to withdraw altogether. That's pretty much what you're looking at.
So there's no way it could be put in the backyard?
That's exactly correct. They're right up against their property line. And then there was also an addition that somehow had potential conflict to build over an easement. They came to us years ago with that issue, and we said we couldn't rule on that. But if you can get permission from the easement to build on top of that, which they successfully did, they put another structure on. And consequently, now they're landlocked about putting a pool anyplace other than on the side.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Does anyone else like to speak? And I close the public hearing and have the applicant respond to the comments from the public. Just one of you, though.
I just wanted to comment on the subdivision meeting and the answers I received from them. At that time, they had objected to this because of three things: because of the noise level that a pool would generate, because of the motor of the pool not being in the backyard, and then because of their perception that this is in the side yard. However, I did have conversations with people at the city. And this is... It does not extend past this line, which is the back line of our house, or the rear line of our house. So we did technically place this in the backyard. I did... We were able to rework the design and reduce the variance so that it is barely touching the setback there. And then... Okay. All right. I think that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions? All right, thanks very much. I'll take it back to the board for discussion.
Could I add something?
Sure. It's Valentine's Day.
Thank you. I appreciate the love. So...
As long as it's short.
It'll be short.
I'll test it.
As you can see, shifting this pool, as Ree mentioned, this is already in what the township is classifying as the backyard, not the side yard. But if we were to shift the pool over to where the existing patio is, this is by no means a large pool. It's 18 by 33, I think it is. There's not room in following the other regulations on how far it needs to be off a house for safety and just functionality. You don't want to walk right out of the house into the pool. So this is really the only spot on the property that this can be managed. You can't put a pool in an easement. It just doesn't work. You can't put anything in an easement without signing off on the rights to, if it ever has to be accessed, you're responsible for all the damage. So with all that taken into consideration, this is really the only place on the property that we can put this pool. And keeping it a functional size is why we really would ask the board to grant us this three-foot encroachment. Because stealing three foot from this is really gonna make it quite small, so...
Thanks very much. Okay, so we'll take it back to the board for discussion.
If I could just clarify for the board, that is considered a side yard. The rear of the property is defined by the rearmost elevation of the home. And you can see where the 35-foot rear setback is, where the rear of the home already encroaches within that setback. That is considered the rear. So this location is in a side yard. So it's been noticed appropriately.
Well, right. And I was just thinking, you still have a side yard setback even in your backyard.
That's true.
So the variance is for the side yard setback. And I think the point was, the ideal location is in the backyard for a pool. Maybe that's what your point was driving to. But there's still an encroachment into the side yard setback either way.
Correct.
So that's what we're talking about. Side yard setback, encroachment that faces the...
I also have a question. Is there not a 10-foot dimension from the building to an accessory structure? Is there no minimum?
Do we have other pictures that we can look at again? Just to...
Yep.
Even though this isn't exactly accurate, it gives you a lay of the...
And I remember from the first discussion, I think Dr. DePinge was making this point, is there was a patio put in that consumed some of the backyard space? So that's what makes this location... So you have to wrestle with whether that's self-created, which is what I'm wrestling with. To me, this is self-created.
My observation is that I think they've got some constraining issues. But obviously, the long-term plan to add a pool, and only after the patio was put in did the pool become necessary, to become of interest, which does raise the question. And, you know, it's like living in a two-bedroom house. When you have six kids, you gotta get a new house. I'm not suggesting that, you know, that's what needs to be done. But sometimes you own a piece of property to accommodate a pool. So with that having been said...
Yeah, that sounds like a...
Yeah. And what I'm gonna do... Yeah, I'm not gonna deal with the permission request. I'm gonna deal strictly with the... I'm gonna deal with the dimensional variance, because that's where I think we want to address this. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the appeal at 2406 Heronwood Drive, I am going to suggest that as it relates to the dimensional variance for the location of the pool and hot tub in the side yard, that the variance be denied as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has not demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not have been unduly burdensome if, over the time, the ability to put in a pool had been considered. Instead, more and more land was consumed with patios, making the necessity of adding this pool a self-created issue, because now it only can fit in the side yard. It would appear that there is injustice to the adjoining neighbors. It is extremely close. And a pool in a side yard can certainly be a distraction and even could be an attractive nuisance, which is always an issue. There are some unique circumstances with the property, but those only come into play because, again, the patio was put in eliminating the space where a pool could have been accommodated. And yet, had the pool been put in and then the patio added, you could have still had both. And I do view this as being self-created. So with that having been said, I think that concludes my motion.
So is there support for the motion?
Support.
I have motion and support. Any discussion on the motions? And there was some sort of... Any discussion? All right. Then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Rosati?
abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she can't... That's just a...
I'm sorry.
Tom, Jocelyn, Bob, Brian, and Scott.
No, okay. Ford? Support.
Support.
Support. Gina Grande?
Support.
Henry?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Then the motion carries.
You're requested to deny it. I'm sorry. Calling the next item. Item 1P, 6750 Oak Hills Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening. State your name and address.
Sure. My name is Deray Marcus. I am the owner of 6750 Oak Hills Drive, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I'm here today because we have a pergola in our backyard on our raised patio. There's a picture of it. And apparently, I have to be in front of this board and get permission to have that erected.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board.
With respect to the property located at 6750 Oak Hills Drive, I would move to grant the permission request for the existing pergola. The structure is compatible with the adjoining properties and appropriate for the neighborhood. The location does not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of any properties, and it's not objectionable for any reason of noise, fumes, et cetera. If this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing pergola. And we typically require some type of screening, which becomes difficult, given the fact that this is on an elevated deck. So, I mean, I see that you've put in the short screening around. Is the intent to have that grow higher?
It is.
Or you could keep that low?
It's gonna grow.
All right. Unless somebody else objects, I think I'm gonna pass on additional screening for it.
Support.
So motion and support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item. Item 1, 2553 Ensley.
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Nahigian. I'm the owner of 2555 Ensley. I'm seeking approval for a backup generator. According to the contractor and the people who I spoke to from the village, the only place to put it is outside the chimney in the side yard because of its proximity to the windows. It's an older home. And I don't believe it would bother anybody. The only time you hear them is when the power's out. And the last time we had a power outage, I heard the neighbors running, and that's what motivated me to get one of my own. So I can't think of anything else.
Keeping up with the Joneses at its best.
I'm sorry?
Keeping up with the Joneses at its best.
And I believe the house next door, although it's much newer than mine, I think it's only a little more than 20 years old. They had to get a variance as well because of where they placed it.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board? No. I'll open this for public comment. Kathy's here. She's dressed in red, so the staff gives her an A+.
What'd you say?
Anyone in red gets an A+ from the staff tonight, so...
Thank you. Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association, 3595 Bradway. Mr. Nahigian is correct that this really is the only place to put this. The entire back of the house is windows and a screened porch. This does meet the requirement to stay the requisite amount of space away from the window. The setbacks in this area of the village are 15 feet, so by defin... And most of the houses are right at the side setbacks. So by definition, if you put something on the side, you're gonna need a variance. Our board did vote to approve this placement and support the variance.
Thanks very much. Anyone else like to speak on this? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the appeal at 2555 Ensley for the generating of the side yard, I move the proposal be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty. As cited, there is no other practical location on the lot other than the side yard. And this has been placed in accordance with requirements to windows, et cetera. So while there's no unique circumstances, it's not self-created. And there's no injustice to the neighbors, as evidenced by association approval. Should the motion pass, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits obtained prior to construction. Evergreen screening will be required to the height of the unit at the time that it is installed.
I'm aware of that. Thank you. I should mention that.
Motion and support. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Long item 2, 5640 Woodwood Drive.
Did you apply for a permit? Come to the Building Department. We need a permit application.
Good evening. My name is Falko Yen. I'm the owner of 5640 Woodwood Drive. And I'm looking for approval to install a maximum of four beehives on my property. And so I want to take up a hobby as a beekeeper. This is not any commercial interest. It's just my hobby would be. And this structure is not permanent, so it's basically a beehive that I put... Will put on bricks, a little elevated, and would be the home of up to four bees and hives. And this is what I'm seeking approval for here.
Why did you pick that location? Is there any other location that you could...
Well, the location... Pretty much what you know is that the entrance has to be located to the south for the bees to go in and out. And this would be a proposal. I'm pretty flexible on that location. But it's not 100% visible here. But on the other pictures, there is a slope... Oh, I'm sorry. There's a slope on the property where it would tuck in a little bit towards that slope and not really visible from the road. And would kind of fit in that area, I thought, the best way. But I would also be flexible on that location.
Okay. And why four? Would you...
Because you should not have one. You should have more than one, right? Because if one hive dies out, you're pretty much optionless. So four is the maximum. I actually would be also flexible on that number. If you say it's two, I would be okay with two. So it's pretty much more than one, right?
Okay. So you've used the word "flexible" twice, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
So we thank you for that. Any other questions from the board? All right, so we'll open this up. Go ahead.
Yeah. I've observed at the school district farm that we have here in Bloomfield Township, that the beehives that they have there, there are at least two installations that I'm aware of. There are these small walls that are about the size of the beehives that go around them as well. Were you planning any other structures of that sort
Just so the board is aware, the reason I was asking is because if my neighbor had beehives, I really wouldn't bother... It really wouldn't bother me, but those structures that they're using, and this is on a farm, so who cares? But I think if I was the neighbor, it's kind of unsightly, in my opinion. But that's why I was asking the question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
So I'll open this to the public for comment. Does anyone like to speak on this? Okay, so come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, Board. My name is David Gallow. I live at 5624 Woodwind. I am the neighbor that lives immediately due east of Mr. Janer's address and probably the most directly impacted by where he is proposing to put the beehives. My bushes are shared bushes, I'm not sure which, but either way, I am the one within that... To the other side of those bushes is my yard. I am certainly concerned a little bit on the placement of the beehives, but even if they were 16 or 20 feet to the interior of his lot, I would still have some objection and reservation about that. And I guess my principal reasons are the following. Just to kind of put in perspective, each of these proposed beehives, which as you know dimensionally are 22 by 30 by 16, will produce about between 10 and 80,000 bees per box. So for four boxes, if they did propagate all the way out, you're looking at over a quarter of a million additional bees being present in and around the home. So yes, they are largely a docile animal, or excuse me, insect, but they do have stingers and they are, you know, known to sting when provoked, basically, or when they feel the nest is being, you know, challenged in any way. Also, you know, things that disturb the bees. They're largely... And it's a defensive mechanism, as you can imagine, but they do sting and they will die if they do sting, so it's a last resort, I get that. But they do sting and they can hurt people. So when you're introducing that many bees, it does present some concerns. Equally, as part of the ecosystem for raising bees, and I'm certainly not an expert, but I had to research a little bit to be able to address you, I know that water is a huge element in their survival and sustenance. So I happen to have a 20 by 40 pool, that's an 800 square foot area of water that they are naturally going to go to. It's within 50 or 60 feet of the proposed site. That will be their target source for water, probably above and beyond anywhere else. So that will impede the use and enjoyment of the pool as well. So just some various concerns like that. My biggest central concern, however, is the following. Yeah, there's ecological benefits and all that to having bees and honeybees, et cetera. There are also some downsides, there are some real-life collateral issues you've got to be aware of, namely, it attracts certain predator-style mammals, rodents, and other insects. So raccoons and skunks love to go for beehives. You can't keep them out. Various rats, mice in particular, will nest in these during the overwinter months. And then you also have yellow jackets and wasps that place beehives high on the food menu. So these are all kind of undesirable type of attractions that you don't want in your backyard or neighborhood and do present, I think, additional risks to children and pets, as well as just nuisance in general. So even though I'm certain Mr. Janer will do an awesome job maintaining all of the appropriateness of everything, and I'm sure he's well-intentioned, I've already spoken to him, he knows where I stand on this, so it's not a surprise, I just don't think it's a good idea for a small lot. This is about a third of an acre, and normally you'd see this, as Mr. Ford suggested, on a much larger parcel where you don't interfere with other people's living. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak?
I'm located at 5615 Raven Court, that you'll kind of see diagonally on the map up there. I agree with everything that Dave had presented to me. Just to echo from a mother of two small children, my concerns are not that of aesthetics. I also enjoy spending a lot of time outdoors. I can appreciate wanting to have a hobby such as this, but from a safety perspective, especially from having a three-year-old and 13-month-old, I just don't think that the lot size presents itself to really do something like this in as safe of a manner. I also have a friend who I would consider someone of an expert, who has been a beekeeper for over five years now, and based on his experience, he is on a lot of about three acres, and also would recommend that the lot size would not be permissible for doing this sort of activity safely. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Does anyone else like to speak? So I'll close the public hearing, then you can come up and address the comments made by the public.
So my intention is, of course, not to have any trouble in the neighborhood, and I'm committed to make that work and to take also care about concerns that neighbors have. And, I mean, those concerns that have been uttered are probably okay to have, but it can be done something against it. And I think you can read about lots of areas where beekeeping in urban areas or suburban areas goes without any problems. And predators and all that stuff, what David mentioned, you can actually prevent, you can have countermeasures against that. And so, yeah, again, I don't think our friendship will go... will break over that, but we disagree on this one, and I'm pretty transparent about that. Again, I just have the wish to make that work and to, yeah, to try it. Thank you.
Was his comment, I mean, do you agree that there are 10,000 to 8,000 bees per box?
Yeah.
Okay. And is water a kind of a target source? Is there some chance?
If it is hot and dry in the summer, yes, but you can give them something to drink on the property, which I would do, right? Of course, they are attracted to water if there is nothing around. That's correct. Yeah, so...
And is your lot size about a third of an acre?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? All right, so we get back for motion. So we have a very small lot, and objections from the neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, in regard... Okay. With regard to the requests at 5640 Woodwind Drive, I'm going to deal with the permission request first. And with regard to the appeal, I'm going to request that the appeal, that the request be denied as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with Section 42.7.6 standards. The size of the accessory structure is not compatible with the adjoining properties. This utility of the property on a lot of this size is very problematic for me. I can understand a much larger size, a larger lot, maybe I don't necessarily disagree with the 40-acre thing that we have before us, but the proximity to other homes is far, far too close for me to consider the placement of more than even one hive, or one hive or even, or two hives even, just one, to be compatible with the neighborhood. Use of the accessory structure is inappropriate to a residential neighborhood of this size where you have, again, smaller, less than acre lots, less than half-acre lots, and the homes are relatively close together. Location of the accessory structure, I think, will hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property. I think an existing homeowner or a prospective homeowner would view those as being something they would not want to be near, which leads to the fourth, which is the non-harmonious nature of the accessory structures that are being requested. And I do think that whether or not the neighbors... A neighbor had come and spoken on this or not, I would suggest that it will interfere with the public safety, which is one of the criteria that we also need to consider.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So we have... We're going to do a roll call?
Rosati?
Yes.
In a roll call.
Yes. I've been thinking about the motion for a minute.
Sorry. Meads?
Opposed.
Ford?
Yes.
Gino Grande?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry, your request is denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 3, 6546 Donigan Court.
I'm Dave Merrick. I'm the homeowner of 6546 Donigan Court in Bloomfield Hills, and I'm asking for a variance for an auxiliary or backup generator on my side lot. The generator is put in, so my contractor's here with me, Mr. Mike Noonan, Noonan Electrical. He was going to pull the contract, get the variance, and we're going to move forward. And then we had an issue, we thought we had plenty of room there, and things came about. We're asking for the side lot, where you see right there. My other area is in the back, we have a pool, we have a pool house, also a Florida room. You want to flip one more? That's my neighbor. Yeah, a couple more.
This is all the pictures.
Oh, there was some other ones in there.
Yeah, we don't put them up.
Okay. Oh, okay. So then the other side of the house is the driveway, and there's issues with plows and things. The back of the house, we have a sliding door, two sliding doors, and a pool house, like I mentioned, and a Florida room. So we decided to put it over on the side of the house. Also, behind that big clump of bushes is our air conditioning unit, so they're both together mechanically. And I've also talked to all my neighbors, and the neighbor that looks at this, you can see their garage in that photo and looks right at it, I have a letter from them that was submitted with their approval, and they don't have an issue with it. I have that letter, if you do not.
If it was submitted, it should be in the packet.
Okay.
Is it Lorraine Pool?
Yep.
Valerie Bell?
Yep.
Yes, we have it in the packet, yep.
That's the air conditioning unit, inside the bushes.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public. Does anyone here like to comment on it? Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at 6546 Donigan Court for an existing generator. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, just basically to put it in any other place in the back of the home. There's a Florida room, there's door walls there, probably some windows as well. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, they did get support from the adjoining neighbor, and I believe that adjoining neighbor also has a generator on the side. The unique circumstances with the property, again, you know, where it is the existing floor plan, which makes this the most reasonable place, as well as that's where the air conditioning unit is, and so the mechanicals are already set up. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits. Must be made within five days because this is an existing generator. And additional evergreens should be planted to screen the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time. So we want to make sure that it is completely screened.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
So calling item 4, 6089 Old Orchard.
Good evening. Matt Mosher, representing the homeowners at 6089 Old Orchard. I was before you, I don't know, maybe a year ago on this, and as they started building the project, this request tonight is to move the pool equipment to behind the pool cabana area. The pool contractor ran into an issue when we had it on the south side of the house because it was, I guess, too far from the spa and wasn't going to give it enough pressure. So our suggestion and his suggestion was to move it to the back of the pool house where it'd be over 25 feet from any of the adjoining neighborly lines and obviously significant distance from the houses around it. We also spoke to the neighbor directly behind, and he was, had no objection and full support. So I believe it's a fairly straightforward request. We did look at the other side of the house, and there is a two fresh air intake vents on that side that won't comply with pool equipment code. So that's the reasoning that we are suggesting the move. Happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the appeal at 6809 Old Orchard Drive, for a setback or for a dimensional variance for, to locate the pool equipment behind the pool house, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, strict compliance with the letter of the law, it is unduly burdensome for the way the equipment needs to work, the distance from the spa, and the lack of another viable location on the other side of the house being a unique circumstance. Should this motion be approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and permits obtained prior to the installation. Evergreen screening, plantings must come to the height of the unit at the time that it is installed.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling item 5, 5546 Stoneley.
4966.
Hi, I'm William Fleury, owner of 4966 Stoneley. And we have a unique situation where our backyard borders on Lone Pine. And a few years ago, Detroit Addison destroyed all the foliage back there. And we've been in this house 30 years. We moved in in 93, and it's never been objectionable until they took out all this foliage, and I can't grow it back. As you could see in the picture on the right, a lot of dead evergreens, it's over $6,000 worth of evergreens, that I can't seem to grow there because it's shady. And now we see all the traffic and we hear all the noise on Lone Pine. And I'm an old guy and I have four grandchildren, three to eight, and the six-year-old is a boy and he's autistic, and I can't play with him in the yard because he'd head right for the street, and I can't catch him. And my mistake was, I didn't ask for a permit on this fence originally. I didn't think about it, to be honest with you, and I apologize for that. But I'm asking for the variance for this fence. It's a cedar fence, it should age well and blend in well.
It doesn't... It's just that one section, it doesn't...
Yeah. We're just trying to block the view from Lone... You can see, it's quite... It's set back 30 feet from Lone Pine, and it's 30 feet from either property line. It's just a straight fence, that's all it is. It's just for the view and to keep the kids from running through there, because there's no foliage in there anymore.
Yeah, so there's quite a few objections to the fence so far, so any flexibility in softening it, or, you know, color or screening it, or...
Well, I would be amenable to anything, but...
You're saying you can't grow anything back there?
I've tried. You can see a lot of those evergreens, and most of them are dead.
Okay. All right, then I'll open the public hearing for this. Does anyone like to comment? Please come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Thirumala Surupaneni. I live across this property, across Lone Pine on 839 Lone Pine Road. It's just been put up suddenly, been living there since 2016, and I don't see any properties around which have... And I don't see any properties around which have fences like that in that neighborhood, especially it's a wooden one, six feet tall. So my concern is the property values, if they would reduce because of that issue.
Thank you very much. So anyone else would like to speak on this item?
Another comment. Generally, Detroit Edison only trims the bushes. They do not cut out. That's my understanding. I could be mistaken, but usually if they're big trees, they only cut the limbs to make sure that they don't interfere with the electric wires.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah.
So, so anyone else would like to speak on this? So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. So we do have in your packet several letters, you can kind of object to.
I have a question. What is the distance from the back of your home to Lone Pine Road? And I will tell you, I used to live in my backyard, butted up to Lone Pine. All right, so I, I know what it's like. But when I look at this, it appears to me that you've got some decent distance between the back of your home and Lone Pine Road.
Oh, I'm sure there's well over 100 feet.
Yeah.
I would bet, yeah.
And I'll just say visually, that's a very impacting sight line and, you know, the untreated wood just jumps off the, you know.
I also have a question. Does it enclose on the sides or it's just a freestanding?
It's just a freestanding.
So, I mean, the children, you know, getting out of Lone Pine could go right around the sides.
There's vegetation on the sides. Edison, when they did this, there's overhead lines there and they destroyed everything. We never used to see Lone Pine. I've been there 30 years. I built that house in 92. I've been there 30 years. And we never, never saw Lone Pine. Now it's lights at night and noise and traffic. And I say I can't let the kids play out there. They're, I have an autistic one. He'd be in that road in an instant. So, I don't know.
But I, I do know generally, I mean, there's a certain aesthetic to Bloomfield Township. And through the years, we've had requests before to do this type of thing. And it, it just is not consistent with the area. All right? I mean, you know, you.
There are a lot of them in the area.
Wait, you put this up and your neighbor comes and says, I want it too. And next thing you know, you're driving down Lone Pine and all there is is a wall of wood on both sides. So we typically have not allowed these unless you're talking about something, for example, backing up to Square Lake Road. You're right on Square Lake Road. Lone Pine is not as heavily traveled as many of the other roads. You've got a decent distance between it and your house. Maybe you can't plant the evergreens directly on your property line, but you could certainly pull them in closer to your home and do some screening if you want, which is what I had to do. Okay? So, I mean, there's alternatives to this and it just, to me personally, appears to be very inconsistent with the area.
Yeah, I'm wondering, have you consulted with a landscape architect or arborist on a species or something that could be done in lieu of fence that would survive there? And, you know, whatever was taken down by Edison sufficed.
The hemlocks will grow underneath trees.
Well, a couple of these were hemlocks. Some, I have a variety of these evergreens we've tried.
They should have grown. I even have recently planted hemlocks.
If they dare go and eat them, they, I don't, I haven't had much luck. And you could see, if you look at some of those pictures on both sides of the fence, our evergreens, and they were all six foot tall when they were put in. There's one from Lone Pine that's dead. And you can see on the left, there's a few of them still alive. I've tried. I've put a lot of money in there, in the landscape and it hasn't worked. I don't know if this is not going to, I don't know what, I guess I can, what can I do?
So another, you know, comment that would be made when we do approve fences, we do want evergreen or screening on the, on the public side of them.
Well, I'd like it on both sides, to be honest with you.
Sorry, let me finish. You would be looking for something that would be able to survive on the, you know, the outside of that fence regardless. And that might mean, you know, where the fence needs to be placed or something. I mean.
Yeah, it's shady, it's shady in there. So it's a problem.
So we can't.
And my neighbor across the street leaves his street light on all the time and I could see it now. I mean, it's light, light pollution also is a problem at night and I don't know how to. And I say I've been there 30 years and till Edison cleared stuff out, I've never had a problem.
One of the, a big problem is that we would require it to be screened and. Pardon? Can't be, one of the requirements for an approval would be that it could be screened. And so far.
You'd have to screen it.
You would.
You have to block the view of it with.
Yes.
Trees or.
And so.
Yeah, I know.
It grows, so you're.
So the fact that you, you were saying that you didn't think it could be screened, that, that's a, that's a factor that.
It's, it's a problem. As you can see, they're all dying. I don't.
Well, that's my point. My point is if it, if it can't be screened, that's going to impact the approval because that's part of the approval was usually that it would be screened.
I don't know, is there a vine we could get to grow on it? I, I don't know.
Yeah. Especially at that height.
I mean, I'll, I'll paint it or stain it if that would help. But, well, it'd be smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, with respect to the property located at 4966 Stone Lay, the request for a dimensional variance for the existing six-foot fence, I would move that that request be denied because the applicant has not demonstrated practical difficulty. Frankly, the property has always been located on Lone Pine Road. The fence itself is out of character for the neighborhood, inconsistent with, you know, the planning goals of the township and the need for it is self-created. And if that motion is approved, the existing fence must be removed within 30 days of approval of the meeting minutes.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Sorry, your request is denied and you'll have to take down the fence.
I have a question. If, if a four-foot allowed, if I cut it down to four feet, would that be acceptable?
That's not allowed either.
Needs to be screened.
Well, you're on a, you're on a front, it's technically a front yard. We don't allow fences in the front yard.
That's my backyard.
No, but it's not technically. You technically have two front yards.
Have two front yards?
Trust me, I've, I've had three for the last two houses I've had, so.
Never learn your lesson.
I never learned my lessons, so.
You've had, yeah.
So it's not, it's not, it's not just a matter of height here, in my opinion.
Yep.
I'm not the chair, though.
Well, we all have opinions, though.
It looked like it was unanimous.
Can the applicant come into the?
Yeah, I mean, you can come in and talk to us in the planning division. Maybe we can come up with another option, you know, maybe something that's a little.
I think if you could move it up into the yard more.
That's what I was thinking. You move it closer to your house, so it's not.
And then you could screen it from the back, you know.
How far do I have to move it up?
Well, you need to move it up enough to get it screened on the back.
Yeah.
Where the evergreens will live. So I would go in and talk to the planning department about it.
We'll give you a call. We can talk to the planning division. We'll give you some ideas of maybe what would work, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Calling the next item. Item six.
Hi, Matt Mosher again, representing the homeowners at 4763 West Wickford. I have Jeremy Wolfe here with me this evening. He's the owner of the house who recently moved in within the last year or so with his young family from Chicago, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, this is a really unique area and property in the fact that this whole kind of subdivision, there's a lake in the center and there was quite a bit of area almost right up to the houses that was deemed wetlands. So what happens with that is essentially you have a 25-foot wetlands buffer and that buffer allows you to really have no kind of outdoor living space. So as part of this process, we've been working, of course, with EGLE and the state agencies to come up with a really nice plan for him to have a backyard that's native. All the neighbors in the neighborhood have pretty much just turned their wetlands into grass. So anyway, we're working hard to find a way to make this property usable for these guys and be sensitive to the nature and everything else. So I'm before you tonight for a couple of things. One is a small pool and patio, a screening trellis and a fire table that encroach into the 25-foot setback. So they do not encroach into the wetland. They only encroach into the setback, which the current deck already does anyway. So as part of that, like I said, we're realized that usually we don't want to try to encroach into the setback. We've got a pretty major hardship here and it's the neighbors throughout. I'm not going to compare them, but I'm pretty sure they're encroaching their patios and such. But we're just trying to go, go about it the right way and come to you guys for the proper approvals. And of course, work, like I said, with the state agency. Nice Wander, who's your township environmental consultants to come up with this plan. So we're before you tonight to ask your permission specifically for this patio, pool area, fire table and trellis screening that you can see in the renderings and plans. Happy to answer any questions.
So Matt, you're basically, I mean, this shows this nice green lawn, but what you're saying is basically this will butt right up to the edge of the wetlands, correct? So you're not going to be putting some green lawn in there, right?
Well, here's the deal, Carol, is that we, we are not going to be putting like fescue and Kentucky bluegrass in. So what we're working, because the neighbors all have lawns in their, in their wetland, we're working with EGLE to come up with a planting plan that's both usable but environmentally friendly.
Okay, so the structures themselves are not touching the wetlands.
Not at all.
There's still some distance.
There's a buffer.
Distance between the structures and the wetland line.
Well, if we go to the site plan.
I couldn't tell by looking at it.
Yeah, so if, I don't know if we can, can we zoom in, Andrea, or no?
Blow that up a little bit.
I think the closest point, if I remember correctly, is like three feet to the actual wetland. And then that area, like right, that little buffer is all going to be native vegetation. I could probably point to it if you.
Yeah, why don't you use a pointer? Because I think that, I mean, you can see it just below the yellow paver stones. Where's the?
Okay.
It's in front of you, yeah.
Is this it here?
Yeah, just hit the red button.
All right, so the, the buffer line is right here. That's the actual wetland. Okay, the wetland's here. And then because there's this existing deck, we tucked the pool as tight as we could to the existing deck not to, not to ask to go right up to the line, to leave an actual buffer, which the state was good with, EGLE. The neighborhood association approved. And obviously, we're here before you guys on, on your half of things. But obviously, the state does a lot of due diligence before they recommend the approval of anything, so.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. And if anyone would like to speak on this?
My name is Sudashen Singhal. I'm the next door neighbor, 4751 West Wickford. We don't have any objection to the plan except that this is a huge pergola, which is 13 feet by 18 feet by seven feet high. It is right next to our property. And in, we have 110 houses in the subdivision. There is no pergola in the whole subdivision. I'm okay with the pool, whatever they want to do, as long as the pergola is a huge structure right next to my house.
So are you saying you don't want any pergola or it needs to be smaller?
Well, I don't know. It's, it's a huge structure. They can put a small pergola as long as it is screened by evergreens. So when I'm on my deck on the upper level, you're looking down, so at least it can be screened.
It's only seven feet high.
Pardon?
It's only seven feet high.
Yeah, seven feet high, but it is 18 feet.
Fire screen.
Yeah, 18, it is going to either width-wise or whatever. And I don't know how tall the evergreen they are going to put on. So that's my main objection. Otherwise, it's fine with me.
Thank you very much.
And the second, one more question. The grading, I just want to, because they are going to grade the property, I just want to make sure that the grading is done in such a way that the water does not come to my property. Thank you.
The reason, I'm Usha Singhal. I'm his wife from 4751 West Wickford. We are very glad that they are going to be able to do something. I have two questions. First of all, they started out the project with the pond in the, pool in the pond, pond in the backyard, a water structure, which is consistent with what we have and their other neighbors on the other side have. And we were very glad about that. But I don't know whether they are going to, they are planning to keep that or that's not going to be there anymore. That's quite far away from their lot, from their house, towards the lake. There's a lake in the back. That's my first question. The reason why we are worried about the grading is because when the house was initially built, the grade on the side is so high that we cannot use the side yard. We can't even mow the grass there because it's all wet all the time. And we can't do anything about it, I guess. We, I don't know if we have any recourse. That's why we are very worried about the grading. Then, we've lived in this house for 32 years. It's a beautiful subdivision. We don't see, it's basically, it's a fancy word for a fence, pergola, the way it is. Because I don't see any other, there are pools in the subdivision. I don't see any other neighborhoods where they have created this kind of structure. We use our lower backyard a lot because we just redid the whole thing a little while, a few years ago. Especially with the COVID and everything, we really enjoyed. We wouldn't like to see this right next door.
Yeah, so we got that comment from your husband. They'll, they'll address that because any, any structure like that would have to be screened, so.
And they have to be screened because we've seen the plans that the subdivision manager showed us. And they said there'll be like seven, eight feet high pine trees, which is not going to be enough. You know, four, five pine, pine trees is not going to be enough for a structure like this. They have to be taller trees and they have to be quite next to each other so they can be, if, if the board allows, permits them to go ahead with the plans, then it has to be definitely well, much well-screened, that what the proposal is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else would like to speak on this? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant to respond to the comments.
We always try to be respectful of the neighbors and I think the Singles will be pleased to know that this property, before the Wolves were in there, was, I think, somewhat just backfilled and graded however. But as you guys know, is we, we have all signed and sealed engineered drainage plans. So this whole plan has been reviewed by not only EGLE, but Nice Wander, the township. And it should solve issues that you may have had in the past because it's going to be, have a full engineered grading plan. That obviously has nothing to do with this variance, but I just thought I'd answer that question. I, I utmost respect for their comments on the trellis and the pergola. It's, it's really not a pergola, as you guys know, it's, or said, it's seven feet tall. And a lot of this is to be, to give privacy to both sides, although it's never going to be seen. The evergreens going in on the property line are already 10 to 12-foot specimens and they're butted up against each other. So at, at eye level view, you'll, you'll never even see this. And just like every project we do here, we work very, very hard to stick within the ordinances. This pergola structure is within the 16-foot side yard setback. We're not asking for any type of dimensional variance. So in my opinion, it's, I appreciate your concern, but I can promise you it's not going to be a hindrance to your view.
Thanks very much. Any other questions from the board?
Quick question. If it is for privacy.
No, I've closed, I've closed.
Oh, you closed my comment? I cannot come back again?
You cannot. No, there's not a rebuttal.
No, I'm answering his.
You cannot.
No.
The public hearing is closed, so you'll have to sit down.
But if he objected something, so he said something, I cannot do anything?
Please sit down. You can talk to them after the, the hearing, but the public hearing is closed. All right, so I'll bring it back to the board now for any discussion or a motion.
Just a quick question. So Eagle has fully approved it?
So, so EGLE has approved the wetlands line. Basically, what, what, there had to be a, there wasn't a true wetlands line. They had to come out and dictate that and they dictated it so that the client could have this patio and pool. And that's how EGLE established the line, is we sent them this plan and said, this is what we think is reasonable. They agreed and they established the line.
You know, this has been fully approved by the neighborhood design committee and, and everything, you know. Never, no, no one's approached us with any issues thus far except a tree planted. But we never would, you know, do anything to. would, you know, do anything opposed to that. And I believe there's a lot of the structures that my neighbors are commenting or not. There's probably a score of them, at least in the neighborhood right now, so certainly complying that. And again, approved by the, all the parties that need it to be referred to, except here.
You mentioned that the existing deck already encroaches into the wetland setback. How much does it encroach already?
You know, if we pull this, I don't know the existing, how much it does, but it, I would guess a few feet.
Okay.
Okay, so that red line that goes across, that's that setback and the deck comes into that. So you can see it's fairly close to the house.
And you're just confirming that it's native plantings that are going to be within the natural feature setback?
Yeah, we're technically not allowed to do anything without a plan that's both approved by EGLE and Nice Wander, who's your guys' obviously township consultant, both of which have been heavily involved in this project.
Yeah, so they're going to specify the species and the.
We have a very renowned wetlands expert who is kind of the center person that's making these plans and communicating with the different parties to make sure, you know, we're not in here to try to do anything goofy. We just want to have a usable place for them and have something that's going to benefit the wetland.
Yeah, right now, our backyard's the only one that doesn't maintain the look of the backyards that EGLE wouldn't even approve right now. And we're not in any way interested in not maintaining the wetlands. We're very, very environmentally conscious and really appreciate the look and beauty of that. My kids love it. I love it.
Okay, so back to the board for, we've heard the comments, we've got the.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
In regard to the appeal at 4763 West Wickford, permission request for the proposed pergola due first be approved based on the information permitted. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible, in fact, fairly modest at the seven, the dimensions quoted. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property. In fact, it will be providing privacy for both the homeowners and the next door neighbors and will be required to have screening, full dense screening to the height of the structure installed and is harmonious with the neighborhood and the architecture of the building. Should I do the dimensional at the same time?
Sure. Sure thing.
In regard to the dimensional variance for the pool fence, pergola, paving stones, patio, gas, fire pit, encroaching into the natural features setback, I recommend approval based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because of the unique depth of the natural features on the lot. The compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. They have taken care to encroach the least amount possible, not much more than the existing deck is there, and it is not self-created due to the extent of the natural features. Should this motion be approved? Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to installation. And again, the screening on the pergola side to meet our ordinance.
Support.
And just clarify, it's native plantings. So our provider, unless our consultant recognizes it as a native planting, would not be a species probably accepted. So we're going to have to be cautious about the planting.
So the city will approve the species?
As long as it's native plantings.
I thought the pergola, though, was.
Not in the, not in the.
Not in the wetlands.
Not in the natural features.
It's in the natural features, right, but not in the wetlands?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
There's nothing in the natural, in the wetland.
Everything's, everything's in the natural features. Nothing is in the wetland.
Native plantings in the natural.
So they have to approve everything because it's in the setback?
Exactly.
So amended.
Thank you.
Support.
So a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 7, 4887 Y Oak. State your name and address and.
Jeff and Becky Kerschwing, 4887 Y Oak.
And why are you, what's the variance you need?
Seeking approval for our fire pit and a swim spa.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to comment on this? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
With regard to the property located at 4887 Y Oak Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed wood burning fire pit and swim spa because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The proposed structures are appropriate for the neighborhood and often found in backyards nowadays. The use of the structure is also appropriate. None of the neighbors have objected to that location or the use. It will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property and it should not be objectional because of anything such as noise, et cetera. And with that, I would say, if the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
I could just make a point that we have received some letters of.
And I, after I said that, I realized that, yes, we did receive some letters opposed, but I believe based upon the evidence presented that it still meets the Section 42-7.6 standards.
So we had objections to the hot tub?
The fire pit.
Fire pit, the smoke and other elements of the fire pit. So let's see, so we had a motion and support. Any other discussion? Alls in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Dry wood, you're good to go.
Yeah, if you pitched it the gas, you wouldn't have to come back, just so you know.
It's not this thing.
Whatever reason.
So calling the next item, item 81906 Long Lake Shores Drive.
How do you do? I'm Lou DeRosier, architect, Bloomfield Hills, and we're here with the builder, Mr. DeRosier, not to be confused with DeRosier. And the clients, the owners here are Mrs. Rubin. And this is, this property is located on Upper Long Lake. And is there a picture? Is this a different thing? All right, so we're doing a beautiful French Renaissance home here. And we do have, we run into, of course, what we call a natural hardship. Do you have that other one that shows the green? There's the house. We photographed the property on the foggiest day of the year, by the way. I have no idea how that happened. Do, there's another one, I think, that has green in it?
First picture, it's just showing up as yellow up there.
Yeah. You mean this one?
Oh, I apologize. I didn't know. Mine is green. So very simply, we have a practical difficulty. We have two side yards, of course, with the water, and we have the 25-foot environmental protection area, the features area. And that's, the house is tight to that, so that becomes our side yard. And among all the other homes down there, if you're not on a canal, you would have 16 feet. So we have nine feet that we lost in the side yard, so to speak. But I love the natural grounds also, so it's good that we keep those. And so we, the only direction we could possibly expand was slightly towards the lake. And so we thought it would be fair to totally match the exact setback of the neighbor on the left side, which is, I think, northwest, and which is 74 feet. And if you look carefully, it's hard to show there. We're not using, the 74 feet is mainly just for our deck. And the, you can see the building undulates back and forth. And the most projected item is the little corner of the patio of the upper deck. So we are kind of cornered in there. And we've done a, we have an exciting house here that we're, hopefully will be a big addition to the neighborhood. But also, the good news is too, that there is an old driveway and an old swimming pool in the natural setback area that we are removing. It's a little difficult to see that, we'd have to zoom in. But we're going to return that entire area to its natural state. So we hope that you would work with us on this. We're excited about it and we hope you feel the same way.
Thanks very much. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, so you've already planned this house to have the deck, right?
Yeah, the patio, yes.
Patio, yeah. Yes.
Yes, the answer is yes, I'm sorry.
So you're not going to be coming back to us in.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And crouch further for more things.
No, I would, I would love to, but we thought we were being fair to the neighbor using their exact same setback that they have. But thank you.
Fair enough, given, you know, some of the other conversations we had today.
Yeah, that's good thinking.
If you're thinking a pool in the future or whatever.
It might impact our decision now.
You have a long-term plan. All right, so any other scuttlebutt or comment or, okay. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for a dimensional variance at 1906 Long Lake Shore, I am going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the nature of the property itself. We do have differing setbacks for homes and the average, while an average can be very inapplicable to a specific piece of property, as in this case. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, they're going to be returning some of the area between the home and the water to its more natural state by the removal of a pool and an old driveway. Unique circumstances of the property, I believe, have been demonstrated. You've got topography requires a deck. You've got the canal on the side, which limits the footprint of the home. And again, if we look at the overhead, it certainly would appear to be within the scope of the adjoining property. And these properties are certainly not self-created and always require unique and thoughtful architects when they design their homes. With that having been said, in the event this is approved, the motion must, excuse me, in the event this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you for working with us.
Calling the next item, item 9383680 Middlebury Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Domeno Nantin. I'm the owner of 3680 Middlebury Lane, Bloomfield Hills, here to request a deviation for a screening for my pool equipment. It's a dimensional variation. Can I borrow the partner?
That's right, there's a bit here. Yep.
Okay. So that's the front elevation. The pool equipment's in the back, next to my pool cabana. The pool equipment is covered with this vinyl fencing panels. They are standard sizes, coming in six by eight. So from front elevation, there's no view of the back. This is the side view. And I have, if you could maybe go to the next slide, I have a number of slides here, I believe, yeah. So I have evergreen screening all around my property, some 32 trees. The view from the west side, this is the side from my land. As you can see, I have evergreens all around the side property here. View from the rear side. So this is a street view, the cabana and the equipment completely covered. No visibility whatsoever. Next slide, please. Do you have, you all my slides or?
I don't have them all.
Okay. Only on two slides?
Well, there's the site plan.
Okay, so someone missing anyways. I had more pictures from each angle of the property with trees shown all across the property line. I also have letters from my neighbors, no objection letters, so both my neighbors on both sides, so.
I think we have a pretty clear picture.
Yeah, okay, good.
Of what you're proposing, why you need it. And any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
I'm, I live in the neighborhood. I drive by this home probably once a day, typically coming from the east towards the west. And have to tell you, every time I drive by, I see the fence. It is not, it is not well-screened. And as I look at the screening that's been planted, it would not be what we call fully screening. They need to be tighter, they need to be, they're tall enough, they need to be tighter. And again, this fence is very, is very visible, so it's just my observation.
Okay. Is there a question anyone has? So I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. So we have Bob's observations.
Can I respond or?
You know, sure. Because that was a quasi-public comment from Bob.
Sure. So I have, you can see, I have 12-foot tall albercides here, you know, next to each other. I can't do any closer. I mean, they're going to be, you know, like in each other, right? So I can't go any closer. There is a, this doesn't work. Okay, here we go. There's a gate here.
So our standard is, it has to be screened from public view, so you've got.
Yeah, so it is. So what I'm saying is from this street side, except for I have a gate which I can't screen. There's an access gate for utility access. Apart from the gate here, everything else is covered. So, but, you know, butted up against each other.
If the screening you've planted, in your opinion, will screen your yard, why have you installed this white fence?
For noise, because my, all the pictures.
But once your screening grows, your trees will block the noise.
No, but it doesn't block from my own noise. I have, unfortunately, all the pictures I'm missing here, I have a pergola or a sitting area next to my pool. And the cabana and the equipment is right next to the pool, sitting area.
Which pictures do you want to show?
Okay.
So you make noise on your own property? I don't understand why that would require a white fence.
Well, these are standard sizes.
Mine just did, it wasn't six feet.
I mean, you've got, you've plant, you have a nice fence around your property. You've planted albercides.
Yeah.
They're going to grow and they're going to screen your backyard.
Screen from my neighbors, right? So that this provides screening for my own home, my own backyard and noise as well because if I didn't have the screening, which is, by the way, 25 or 30 feet from my neighbors, so I have plenty of clearance setbacks. And if I didn't have the screening here, there's not a picture I can put here.
Now, I don't understand what you're saying. You're saying you're going to make noise on your own property and you're screening your noise from the neighbors?
No, because the equipment, this equipment here.
I think he's screening it from his, he doesn't want to hear the noise.
He's sitting there, he wants the fence between.
He's sitting close to it.
Oh.
This equipment is right next to my.
Wants to screen his family's noise?
No, my family is the noise from the equipment.
So there's.
So he doesn't hear it when he's sitting outside.
That's what you have evergreen plantings for.
Why does it need to be six feet high?
Yeah, why does it have to be a six-foot?
Well, I didn't build it from scratch. It was standard panel that I got from like any store. You can buy those panels that are six by eight. And, you know, my HOA has no problem with it. My neighbors have no problem with it. It matches all my landscape.
I'm familiar with the building restrictions in that subdivision. The building restrictions do not allow fences over four feet high.
Yeah, I feel like the height of that fence is making it look like more building. I mean, you can't tell whether that's a fence or building and.
That's why it always attracts my attention when I drive by. I literally can't.
Unfortunately, out of balance with the nice fence. You have lovely fencing around the outside and it's.
I'm obstructing the neighborhood. I'm obstructing any traffic. Neighbors don't, they actually gave me a letter in writing, no objection letter. My HOA came and said they're okay with it. I have put $10,000 off trees around the house. I mean, you know, what else can I do?
Well, even with fences, we would be requiring, so the screening we're talking about around your metal fence is actually seems, you know, kind of nice right now. This would need to be screened right up against, for me, right up against that white mass and in kind of a solid thing to make it look more green. And I still think the six-feet-high makes it look like more building, not fence.
It looks like you have a photo identifying the height of the unit.
The.
Looks like it's at 52 inches.
Which unit, sorry?
52 inches. That's what you're showing with your yardstick.
Ah, okay, sorry, yeah, I'll put that picture up here. That's the, right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's the electric panel. So that panel, I'm not sure this is going to work, here we go. Yeah, that panel, the structure of the panel is about four and a half feet tall. So if I have a four-feet-high panel fencing, it'd be visible from the top.
Can't that top rail be dropped a little bit?
Which, the panel, you mean, or the?
Not the electrical panel, but the unit straight at the top of it? So it is at four feet?
You mean, this panel here, the structure of the.
Talk about the roof of the. No, I'm talking about on top of the electrical panel. There's a horizontal bar.
I'll have to cut it down if I have to.
Then it's four feet and a four-foot fence blocks it.
And then a four-foot fence.
If I had to put greenery, I mean, again, I didn't build the fence from scratch. It's a standard panel I buy from anywhere, from hardware stores.
Yeah, we're saying that choice has a significant impact.
You could have also bought a four-foot.
I think they make four-foot ones.
They're four-foot panels.
I don't believe they come in four-foot, but they may do, but it won't be aesthetically pleasing like this one's here. They match my color scheme, they match my landscaping.
I guess, I guess.
We're trying to give you our guidance here because we vote on this.
My thought is, is that whatever, whatever, whatever height you have, whether it's four feet or six feet, it's going to need to be completely screened from the road. All right?
Okay, so.
I know the fence part is, but this part is not. The question of whether or not it needs to be four feet or six feet.
I can put more arborvitae around the, if that's what you're asking me, I can put it around the fencing, except for where the plumbing goes, this plumbing and this gas.
It needs to be, it needs to be so you can't see it from Wadsworth.
Okay, okay, so these plants that are heavy and significant. Wadsworth.
No, because they're on the property line. They're not screening the fence itself.
Yeah, but that blocks it from the view of the street, from the street, so I'm okay if you are asking.
It doesn't, when I drive by it.
If you put a fence on the property line, we would require, if we allowed that fence, we would require you to totally screen it.
Yeah, on the property line, yes.
Well, so it's the same thing. You have to totally screen it.
Okay, I understand. So you can see this picture here, it's not very clear, right here. That's Wadsworth side. So I got.
I think you're not listening. The structure itself up against the structure has to be screened. Along the structure.
Okay, so double layer of greenery? That's what you're asking, because these, those greenery is between the structure and the road. You're asking, well, it's not a layer of.
All fence structures have to be screened regardless of what they're on.
Against the fence.
The property line or internal, so.
So you're going to have to put planting, so we can't see what we're seeing in that picture.
So that picture is from my own land. You can't see that from the street. The picture you're seeing here, that's taken from, in my land.
All right.
Okay, I'll screen it. I mean, if you want to screen, I'll just explain to you, this picture is taken from inside my land.
Structures inside backyards.
Okay.
People put up pergolas, they put up different things, and we require them to be screened along those structures. The same requirement, if we approve this, would be required here.
Okay, all right.
What you have along your property line is insufficient to screen this.
All right, so greenery along Wadsworth Street, right? That side?
No, 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 we're not going down this path again.
Well, I'm asking you.
The structure itself against, against the structure has to be screened.
I understand, so that's, I'm asking for your guidance here.
Well, that's what we're giving it to you.
I know, but I also have to say I have a gate to this fenced area so I can access.
But if you look through it, if that structure's totally screened, you'll see trees. If you look through the gate, you will see trees and not the white fence.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
So do you know where to put the plantings?
Wadsworth side.
So we can't see that.
Entire thing.
All around the fence.
All the way around.
Around the perimeter.
We might need him to come back and show us where those screens would be.
Screening plan for this.
This side is paved.
Unless the, unless the staff can.
No, we will return it so that the board can administer. Concern what the landscaping is, or their alternative is to drop it four feet.
I can, I can put trees. I'm just asking for guidance, so I'm going to come back, okay? To be transparent.
I don't know how many times we can tell you that you have to put the plantings up against that, you know, fencing, so that you can't see it from the road.
Okay, all right.
So you need to come back with a plan that has a layout of your backyard with the structure and then the actual locations of where you're going to put the plantings.
And not just the road, any neighbor.
Yeah.
Like, it's probably.
Well, it's got to be screened from public view.
Okay. All right, I'll come back.
Motion to table?
We have a motion to table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table the request at 3680 Middlebury Lane until such time as we can see an enhanced landscape plan.
Support? Any discussion on that, motion to support? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Calling the next item. 4288 Stonely.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening.
4288 Stonely, right?
Yes.
Yeah. My name is Iman Rather, and this is Subir Rather. We're the owners of the, of the house, 4288 Stonely. And we're here to get approval for a four-feet-tall trash enclosure structure located on the side of our house. We already put it up, not knowing that we needed to get a permit. Sorry for that, we really apologize. But we did screen it. We have eight trash cans in there, and they're all covered, they have lids. We don't put any trash outside the trash cans. We have a lot of kids, so they eat a lot.
Oh, you must do a lot of cooking.
We have, yeah, we do. We've raised nine kids in that home, and now we have four adult men that eat constantly and they work out, so it's a lot of trash. And the reason I can't keep it in my garage, because it smells really bad, and I have a lot of maggots because of it, and a lot of flies in my house.
And we have spicy food.
Lot of food, so we're asking, please let us keep it.
Why did you pick this location?
That's the only spot in our home that's available, because our house is, like, located on a hill, and the other side has stairs, and it's all, like, brick paver, so we would not be able to put it there.
No, yeah, we don't want it in the front yard.
Oh, no, I know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This is sort of off-base, but I understand the smelly garbage in the garage, okay?
And the flies.
Because the baby diapers and all that stuff, you know? But here's my question. I always wondered, so let's say we got a lot of snow, how do you get your cans up to the street?
It's very close to the street.
Oh, is it?
It's very close to the driveway, yeah.
But I mean, I always wondered about that, because you have to somehow get it from that side.
Yeah.
Into something where you could roll.
Yeah, we make the boys do it.
So I live on a private road, I have that issue. I can give you all the different devices I've used to.
All right.
So to the point about the smelly garbage, so there's some opposition to this for that reason. So typically, right, your, you know, trash cans are in your garage, and I think there's objections from your neighbors about the smell that you just talked about, not wanting to have in your garage, and the maggots and everything else, so now that's outside, so.
Actually, it's not. There's no maggots. I check all the, not, not out there, there isn't, because it was enclosed, especially in the summertime, it's really hot.
Right.
In the, in the garage, so it does cause flies and maggots.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the board? So help us, the public comment, if anyone would like to comment on it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Wood. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association for Werner States. And on behalf of some of the concerns brought by some of the property owners and the board, I'm representing that we do not support this structure. I think it's in violation of multiple ordinances. It was built without prior approval. It, you know, the ordinance talks about structures being in the backyard, this is on the side. It infringes six feet into the 16-foot lot line in it. Although it is screened largely from the road, it's not fully screened. I mean, if, I don't know if this.
Does this work or?
Yeah. I was going to say, I think it might be upside down. There you go.
So, you know, it's probably 50-foot setback from the road, from the neighbor and from the other, because of these large doors, six-foot doors, it's not fully screened. And we have 147 houses in the neighborhood. We don't have any other properties that have a structure like this. It's in violation of our deed restrictions of ancillary structures. And it, the concern was brought to us, myself as the president and the board. The board met on it, and we just, we don't support it. And we feel that we're going to set a precedent that the neighborhoods can end up with a bunch of these structures, and so that's our, our point. I just wanted to be brief, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? So wait, 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 wait. Is anyone else like to speak? I'm sorry.
Gentlemen in the blue.
Yeah, we have another.
My name is Gene Nelson. I live at 4643 Brightmore, which is across the lake. I am the chairman of the Architecture Committee, and I'd just like to reiterate some of the things you already talked about. We all face the same issue, and garbage and trash is a problem. And I understand that, but we also are fortunate, we also have some very large garages. And, you know, I think, as you said, moving the garbage outside, if it is smelly, it's going to put the problem outside instead of inside. And there is a neighbor on that side of the house. And, you know, for those reasons, we were notified by a homeowner when the construction began. And I did contact the Rather's and have a conversation, and it was clear that their intent was to camouflage rather than to stop construction. So, you know, we object on the grounds that, as Kevin has already raised.
Thanks very much. Does anyone else like to speak on this? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant to respond.
I would like to say one more thing. I did read the.
You have the right to do that, so you can respond to what was said.
Okay, I did read the bylaws, and we are allowed to keep our trash cans outside with the lid on. It is in the bylaws, I did read that, so.
You direct your comments to us?
Okay, so I, so either way, I'm just going to keep my trash outside now, like, because it's in the bylaws, I can do that. And I'll keep the trash, the lid on, and I'll keep it clean and everything. I just can't tolerate the flies and the smell anymore.
If we have to, we can move the fence, because we have put enough trees. But the fence was to, in order to cover the fence, we put the trees, if you notice. They are young, so they get bigger. So if it's object to you, if you objected, we can remove the wooden structure. If this is, it make you happy, I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have a question. Seems to me, I mean, we're approving certain, you know, appliances inside yards. When it's a side, you know, a hardship, they can't get a condenser or something else anywhere else. But otherwise, they're meant to be in rear yards. So I think you could have your trash cans outside, you could have a fence around it. Can it go around the back of your garage? You would even have doors from the garage to wheel it out to the street and keep those outside and on the back of the garage instead of the side yard. So I have a problem approving this in a side yard that puts, you know, the odor of the trash against a neighbor. But I understand what you're talking about, and I wonder if you could do it off the back of your garage.
The problem I'm facing?
I think it's back, it's back to my house, it's connected, there's no backup it.
Oh, there's not? Oh, I thought it looked like.
My, my observation is that.
Talk to him.
What we're dealing with is not the placement of the trash cans. What we're dealing with is an enclosure that conceals them from public view. There's nothing that precludes them from tearing down all those trees and tearing down the fence and leaving eight trash cans on the side of the house.
I think that's what they're saying, they would.
So would we be wiser to allow trees and a fence than to allow eight trash cans to simply sit out in public view?
Well, that's, that's what I was struggling with, with that, that issue right there, because actually, she could just have, or they can have as a family, eight trash cans just sitting out there. Is that more unsightly than having this enclosure? But according to the objections, I guess it is, because neighbors have talked about that. And I haven't heard any reference to the concern about the trash cans out there, but this, the structure, which cannot be fully screened, because you have to have doors to be able to move the cans out.
So they can take, they can take down, they can take down the fencing. They can even get rid of the trees.
Yeah.
And just leave eight shiny trash cans out there.
And what is, and they can smell, and they can do whatever, because they're sitting out there. So what is worse?
Patty?
I'm sorry.
We don't have any ordinances that restrict the placement of garbage cans outside.
We were just confirming, based on, there was an ordinance letter that was sent to the applicant. My recollection is that it can't be at the street, so we're just trying to confirm whether, where the placement on the exterior is permitted.
Yeah, I would be curious about that, because I know a lot of times it's required to be in the rear yard.
Correct.
Well, you could put them out by your front door, you just can't put them out by the street.
If it's not, then I think it's sort of.
If I could just read, maybe this will help you.
Okay.
This is a letter that was sent to the property owner on October 19th, 2022. Per ordinance listed below are some of the guidelines that are all, that all accessory structures should meet. If these criteria can be met, then a variance will be required. Be placed in a rear yard, at least 16 feet from the property line, must be screened from public view. That's what was addressed relating to the shed that was installed. But I don't see any reference to the actual garbage can location.
Yeah, because the shed obviously is a permanent structure versus.
Garbage cans are not a permanent structure, so they don't require permission or dimensional variance.
Correct.
So I think it has to do with not leaving it at the curb.
See, and that, and that's what I'm struggling with, because if you have the right to leave your trash cans outside wherever you want, certainly what they've done here aesthetically is much nicer.
I would agree. I mean, I, if, if nothing else, there are critters. And even with lids on, critters like things that have smell. And will at least attempt to get their lids off.
Yeah.
So I, one of the reasons you don't have that problem in a garage is because obviously the garage door is closed. Outside, that's a different story, but I think, I think we're faced with, with a no-win, a no-win scenario here. We can, we can deny the request, and then we've got eight trash cans that they could literally put at the lot line, because they don't even need to be up against the garage. And, and, or we can try and find a way to mitigate, mitigate this, this, this problem.
Well, there's, there's an option for the, because the owners are trying to make sure that their house looks nice, they want it to look nice. So the other thing they could do is just, you know, increase the amount of arborvitae, so basically they're building that fence that blocks, that way they don't see it, their neighbors don't see it.
They have a way to get the cans out from the road.
No problem with the location.
I had a clarification from our lead ordinance officer, who's viewing the meeting tonight, and he said that trash must be stored out of public view. So if it's, so with the, without the screening, then it would be in public view on that side of the, of the garage.
Unless the arborvitae is completely screened.
Correct, which necessitates the variance.
The screening is now required and the greenery to, okay, I get it.
Yes, so we could do without the fence and more greenery.
So that feeds, that feeds the practical difficulty of the dimensional variance.
Go for it.
Yes, ma'am. Let's do the permission request first. Permission, permission request. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance and the permission request at 4288 Stonely Road, I will go with the permission request first, and request that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. In fact, the use of the accessory structure is, is appropriate to the neighborhood, because we literally want to screen these trash cans from public view. And so it now needs to be, it need, it is required to be able to do that. So, and I do not believe that it's going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of their location either. With that having been said, on the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. The trash cans can be stored outside. A strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because while the trash cans would be stored outside, putting them in the rear yard, which is significantly distant from the road, is unduly burdensome. Enclosing these does no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, it helps to support their being screened from public view. Unique circumstances of the property, I think, have been demonstrated. You've got a topographical issue with the drop-off in the back. This making the side yard the best place for this. And none of that is self-created. We need to screen these things. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing structure, and I do believe some additional evergreen screening is required to screen this from public view.
Yes.
Support. Motion, support, so discussion. I just want to make sure the staff makes it clear to the applicant that this motion does include the need for additional screening.
Yes, additional screening.
So with that, with that, I'm, I'm in favor. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. And just so you know, you're going to need to put additional screening around that enclosure. So the trash cans, you've got something there now that partially screens, but it needs to be complete.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Calling the next item. Item 112770 Macintosh Lane.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Yerkes. I'm with Antinelli Landscape, and I am representing the Gross family. Michael is here from 2770 Macintosh Lane. And we are seeking approval for accessory structures, including a gazebo structure, the pillars around it, the structures there next to the pool as proposed, and then the raised pillars next to a raised spa with a spillover into that pool, as well as the raised patio space. And the pillars at the gate, which may be on the next, there it is. So if there's any questions on these pieces that we are looking to propose to construct this year, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
No lights on the pillars, correct?
Not lanterns. They would be pots. However, underneath the cap is a small LED low voltage accent light on the, yes, on the brick material itself.
So open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this? I don't think so.
All of his neighbors are in favor of this, as well as the fact that a lot of his property is surrounded by trees. He's installed himself several additional trees, but has arborvitae lining one side with some other mature trees. And I can assure you, there will be no beehives on this property as well.
That's a good, thank you.
She's been paying attention.
He might have room for it.
So close the public hearing, just a-
Write down the address-
Public hearing is closed.
The screening against Lone Pine. Did you write down the address of the house that needed the screening from Lone Pine?
For the bees?
No.
No, from Lone Pine Road.
Oh, yeah, he needs some help with the, yeah. I was thinking maybe some ivy.
All right. Bring it back to the board for a motion. Ready. Very straightforward.
It's nice to have you here.
With respect to the property located at 2770 Macintosh Lane, I would first move to grant the permission request for the proposed spa, piers, fire bowls, and pergola, as the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6. The proposed structures are compatible with the adjoining area and appropriate for the neighborhood. As to the dimensional variance, I would move that that be approved for the proposed piers in the side yards, because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The, the size of the structure is, wait a minute, let me think a minute. Give me an overall picture here.
That looks nicely done.
I'm just going to say that the applicant has met all the standards for practical difficulty, and it is not self-created. There's sufficient property in the backyard to accommodate all of these structures and meet all the setback, or the piers. Let me back up. I don't know what to say here.
Oh, you were brilliant. I think that was good.
I'm just going to say it meets all the standards for practical difficulty.
Everyone in the audience is applauding you, so that's a good motion, yeah.
And again, I will say that piers, we can only have that, the underneath lighting on those, downlight lighting.
Absolutely.
No, no lights on the top.
It is, yeah, not preferred by the customer.
If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits obtained prior to installation. I need to do some practicing here.
Support.
You're getting a little rusty there.
Okay, it's just getting late. We understand.
So we have motion and support and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
And you get like a B-plus because you have pink, which is close.
Yes, there we go.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. Richie Atof, representing DCD Bloomfield, asking for dimensional variance for some signage and a, and a second sign on the existing monument sign, which is approved by the ZBA many years ago for the purpose of helping the situation where we have Telegraph Road address, but no direct telegraph ingress or egress. And the site is very, you know, the configuration of it has lots of angles, and it's hard to see. With me tonight is the co-owner Nancy Giftis of The Bodyburn, the newest member of the Bloomfield Township Business Community, and my wife Dolores, who didn't believe there was a meeting tonight. So we're asking for the-
We're very tough.
Better grab some of these.
Slight dimension of variance, because this is a reconfiguration of a building that used to be another use, and it was much deeper than a normal center. Therefore, because of the square footage that they require, their, their frontage is, is minimal. So that's why we're exceeding the 6%. And actually, the text doesn't exceed this, the square footage, but the open triangular part of the logo, which is almost like an architectural feature, causes it to be greater. And then, of course, the second sign request to be on the monument sign.
I may need to recuse myself. I have a personal objection to physical fitness facilities.
Me too.
You, sit down. Pay no attention to that man on the corner. I feel like this meeting has been a body burn.
Well, let's see. We may have burned some calories.
We're being telephoned.
Yeah, we did. Considering, considering, we denied more motions than that than I thought we'd done.
I know. Okay, let's finish up, though.
Let's finish strong here. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to comment on this?
About the wife that wanted to make sure that it's a meeting?
Not endorse it, or?
Just to confirm.
Yeah. And you stayed here on Valentine's Day the whole time, so I-
I'll give you my chocolates for your patience.
All right, so I'll close the public hearing.
Wait, wait, wait. How come we don't get chocolates on the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the appeal at 2527 South Telegraph, I move to approve the dimensional variance requested for the size of the wall sign. Move the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards of practical difficulty. Specifically, compliance with the strict letter would be unduly burdensome because of the nature of the property, its visibility from telegraph, safety for people finding this business, and the orientation of the property with the small frontage for calculating the square footage. Should the applicant, should this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits may, must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to installation.
Support. Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's. You, you stayed here that long, you, you're entitled to-
On a side note, I had, took a particular interest in 4288 Stonely, because I built the home in 1976.
Oh, wow.
Lived there with my family, my parents, my grandmother, my brothers, before I was even married. And never once do we have garbage cans outside.
There we go.
It's a, it's a tough one.
So I wonder what body burn.
Are we adjourned?
No, we have, now, we have zoning ordinance amendments to go through.
Well, hopefully everyone read your packet.
Yeah, I read it.
Clearly.
Didn't.
Conversation.
I read it.
Okay, so moving along. So as you know, periodically, we look at our zoning ordinance, our zoning board of appeals record, if you will, and to see what appears to be a pattern of approvals. And so in this instance, we noted that there could be some additional patio elements that could be added. You know, 2019, we added things like the kitchenette and the, and the stone piers and so forth. Well, now we're, we're thinking that there appears to be a consistency of approving pergolas on a patio that's immediately adjacent to a home. So we are proposing in the, in one of the two ordinances, that we clarify what a pergola is, and that it is a feature that has an open slatted roof. By definition, by its placement, it would be permitted, as long as it's on a patio that's immediately adjacent to the home. So a pergola that is in the back 40 would not be a, an item that we could approve. That would have to come back to the zoning board of appeals. But if it's immediately adjacent to the home, and this is a perfect example, then this would be permitted by right, and would just need a building permit.
Rear yard, rear yard.
Directly attached to the home.
Either in the rear yard or in a secondary frontage, as long as it complies with setbacks.
I got mine approved. It's on the side yard. I just wanted-
So next, um-
No, Carol and I both said, so it has to be attached to the building?
Not attached. It has to be a budding. Immediately adjacent, a budding. So we're using those term, term of art. Doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be physically connected.
Like the first one tonight was-
What if you're 10 feet away?
The patio abutted, but the structure.
No, it's not 10 feet. It has to be adjacent. It has to be adjacent.
What about the height of it?
It has to be 14 feet. So you have to comply with the, the-
Is that from grade, or is it from the patio surface?
It'd be from grade.
Oh, it's been from grade.
So if you have an elevated patio, then you can take that into account with your overall height of your pergola. So the other thing that we've done, and maybe to be consistent with the ordinance, is that driving home, this whole idea about a patio being immediately adjacent to the home, that's giving us that condition where we can approve all these elements. So if you have a patio, again, in the back 40, then that wouldn't constitute the exceptions that we're looking at under the, under the section that we're referencing here. And then we also added fountains, a four-foot fountain, again, on a patio, immediately adjacent to the home. You've been approving those as well, and you're, you're always consistent about requiring that it be screened from view by, from the public. And so we've carried that language through to the ordinance. The second draft ordinance.
Can I back up?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. I find the immediately adjacent language problematic.
Can you pull up item 1P that we saw just tonight and go to the, the architect's rendering? And, yeah, just the, oh, this is still on that.
I, I got it, I got it.
Because it's a pergola, the patio abuts the house, but the pergola's out somewhat.
She's talking about the one on Oak Hill's-
It's freestanding.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, that was-
Understand, yeah. And it's really nice. And so-
So what I'm hearing is that the board is suggesting maybe some leniency. Now, understand, when you're talking about a pergola that's adjacent to the home, you're establishing some criteria of it being most likely not that visible from any adjoining property, because it's abutting the rear. Once you start moving those elements farther and farther out, and now you're talking about something of height. It's one thing when you have a, a kitchenette that might be four feet tall with, with stainless steel or whatever. But this is something that's going to be 14 feet in height. So this, again, it's not precluding someone coming before the ZBA and asking for approval, because then the neighbors might very well want to comment on that screening. But we're suggesting, is there some way that a pergola could be placed on the property, most likely be as least intrusive to the neighbors from view, still add screening to it, and allow it by right?
One of the things that, one of the things that this does, both the pergola and the fountain, is that it creates, it creates a criteria that eliminates the need for the variance.
Right.
Doesn't mean that you still can't want, still can't seek one.
Right.
But I'm, I'm wondering if on occasion, we don't, if, if they knew, if the new put it here, I didn't have to-
Right.
I didn't have to apply for a variance, and if I put it out here, I do. If I want a six-foot fountain, I got to apply for variance. If I do a four-foot fountain, I don't. Maybe we would see fewer six-feet fountains.
Oh, I, I'm not opposed to it.
I know.
It's just that I think, I think that, I think also that we have very few, in the overall scheme of things, we have very few requests that actually attach to the house, the pergolas.
Right.
They're, they're, they're not attached. So we'll get rid of some of our applications, but we'll still get a lot of them.
Yeah, there's some.
And does it have to be open? I mean, I know-
That's what a pergola is.
Yeah.
It's got to be, otherwise then you got a canopy.
Otherwise, it's an enclosed, it's a closed structure.
A lot of the pergolas that come in are not open.
I know.
Well, unfortunately, we're using the term pergola incorrectly.
Right.
So I'm, I'm going to be trying to narrow down our definitions and our terminology. We've been pretty free in how we've been describing, like, for tonight, that one by Huzit's.
It was all covered, yeah.
It was a fence.
It was a fence. It wasn't a-
It wasn't a pergola.
So we're going to be a little more defined. And I shouldn't say Huzit's. I, I, the gentleman, I can't remember.
We know what you meant.
Huzit's is fine.
So you're talking strictly pergola, like in the real term.
Real pergola.
Okay.
Open to the air.
Real coy pergola.
Slats.
Okay.
Again, these, we're taking incremental steps. And so that's what we're-
And I, I hope you don't, I'm not trying to criticize.
No, no, I'm just trying to explain our intention.
Administration of the Zone Board. For having you here.
You know, anything that'll get, cut down the number of various requests is great.
Well, almost permission request versus variance.
Can we go to the next ordinance?
Trying to.
And you thought you wouldn't get any comments.
Okay.
I don't know why it's not changing up on the screen.
Let me just describe it then. So the next one is our ground mounted mechanicals. And we had actually, I noticed two-
Save us for last, Patty.
Two tonight that would not have come before you if we ended up adopting this ordinance. So what we're doing is we're taking ground mounted mechanicals out of the accessory structure provisions of our ordinance, and putting it into our site standards. So again, if it complies with the site standards, it's permissive, and it has, and it just needs to seek permits. It doesn't have to be reviewed under the accessory structures, insisting on the criteria of screening, or, and I shouldn't say screening, because we're actually including that.
Exhaust.
But, but other criteria that's found under the accessory structures. So with the ground mounted mechanicals, we're defining, we're putting them into the site standards. We're actually looking at providing some leniency when it comes to putting them in the side setback or the secondary frontage. And in regard to the side setback, right now, you have to have 16 feet from the unit to the side lot line. We're allowing, we're by, we're suggesting that you can encroach up to six feet within that 16 feet, as long as you're maintaining a 10-foot green belt. And in, and within that green, green belt, you can actually then add your evergreen screening, which would be required. And, and one in a, in very few occasions, somebody wants to actually screen it by a masonry wall or fencing. But in that instance, you'd then measure that 10-foot green belt from that fence line to that rear lot line. So we're maintaining a 10-foot green belt. In the secondary frontage, where we have a 40-foot setback, we're allowing that unit to be placed within 10 feet, as measured from the building, along that secondary frontage, maintaining a 30-foot green belt, suggesting that same criteria, that you can put green, evergreen screening around it. That could encroach in that, that 30 feet. But if you're going to put a, some sort of a screen wall, fence, so forth, then that would actually have to maintain that, that 30 feet, have to be inside that setback. The, the section also is by reference, just acknowledging that there is minimal decibel requirements. And so we are specifically referencing the 70 dB, then referencing Chapter 14. In the-
If I could just comment on that, I think it would eliminate a lot of the generators in the village. As you just heard Kathy say tonight, I mean, these houses are already at a 16-foot setback.
And that would be the two that we're talking about tonight. You wouldn't have seen it.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be great, because there's so many of those.
Well, we're not. I mean, I guess the whole point of the board's only appeals is if a-
is if a neighbor wants to come in and complain, they get their, you know, their say-so, yeah.
So the other one we're adding to this is wall-mounted mechanicals. Wall-mounted mechanical units are showing up in the township, and they're... What is that?
Mini splits?
Yeah, mini split.
We're learning terms, terms here, mini splits. And sometimes they'll be attached to maybe four-season rooms, or sunrooms, or maybe a garage addition, so forth.
I could use one of those in my house.
But we want to make sure that they're screened. So if it's going to be in a side yard or a secondary frontage, we want to make sure that there's, they're screened from public view at time of placement. And because we don't have anything references, referencing in our zoning ordinance, we wouldn't be able to regulate it. So we're adding a brand-new section that speaks specifically to this in our residential districts. And then, as an aside...
So is that heating and cooling unit, or is it just...
Yes, yep.
Wow.
It's that small.
And it goes on the outside, and then it...
That could do half the house.
Inside, there's a small, you see in hotels sometimes on the wall, like three feet by this tall, maybe?
18 feet, 18 inches, yeah.
And it heats and cools.
Okay, wow. And it's run on electric?
Yeah, they're efficient. Very interesting.
And then lastly, just because we're trying to be consistent, we also reference if the units are in non-residential districts. Well, commercially, we're trying to get all of the ground-mounted mechanicals immediately adjacent to the building, typically in the rear yard placement, or depending on the size of the commercial property, maybe could be allowed on the side yard. But again, all our examples are trying to show that they need to be screened by evergreen plantings 24 or 12 months of the year, or if there are going to be some screening, then they're going to be screened appropriately to match the height of the unit. So this is not necessarily housekeeping, but we're trying to reflect what we're hearing the board is acting on, and then making some improvements to the way we're processing applications. Can I bring up one other, one other item, talk about all these, this equipment? Have you looked at all, you know, we get a lot of requests for the pool equipment, instead of putting it immediately adjacent, to put it immediately adjacent to the pool house, which makes a lot of sense.
You know, we did talk, we have talked about that, and I think, I guess, I guess at the end of the day, we didn't know how much we would necessarily eliminate.
Well, I think with pool equipment, there's noise. Right. And if you're putting adjacent to a pool house, the supposition is that pool house structure is going to be closer to a lot line, or closer to an abutting residence. So now you're pushing that noise. What if you required it to be, like, within, or enclosed in a structure?
Or in a structure, yeah.
Well, if you required it to be within the pool house...
The pool house has to come anyways.
Yeah.
The pool house is going to come before you. The intention of these ordinance amendments is to eliminate things coming to the zoning board.
Sure.
So that was kind of the baseline of where we're starting. And not just eliminate things coming to the zoning board, but things that are routinely approved. Let me clarify that.
No, I agree. If we're saying yes every time, it's like, okay...
And that's exactly what we do.
That's the thing. We have one...
So we have played around with it. We have talked about the idea of allowing in that situation, but we're not really sure what advantage that would provide, because that pool house is coming to the zoning board anyways. It's very rare that we have a request to do it way after the fact.
I can think of a couple where we actually had it where it was not next to a house or a pool house, and...
Yeah, I remember that. We've seen a couple of those, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't know if there was a way to address those, where you could possibly allow a subject to, you know, saying, was it closed? I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, because if you want noise, just listen to one of those generators once it fires up. So I think the pool equipment is relatively quiet compared, compared to...
The generators are. That's how I know whether the power's on. I open the window and listen to all the generators.
Oh.
I guess we could probably almost look at it in a way that if they, if, we could allow them if they are located in an enclosed, like, there could be a condition that if they're enclosed in an approved accessory structure. But again, I don't know how much that's going to relieve, it's not very common, so.
These are good ones. I like.
It was a good start. Again, we're building on what we've been, you know, presenting to you and acting on, you know, the modifications that we recently made in 2019. So this is scheduled to go before the planning commission on the 20th for their public hearing. Then they'll make a recommendation on to the township board for consideration for adoption. But we'll make sure that your comments tonight, as reflected in the minutes, be part of their discussion on the 20th.
Great. I have one other area. Nobody wants to leave. Natural feature setback. It seems like, I mean, we just had one today where essentially the whole natural feature setback had, you know, there are different things. So sometimes we just have like a path, sometimes it'd just be...
A lawn.
And now it just seems like there are more and more intense uses going into that natural feature setback. So it's really not, it seems like it's not a setback anymore to me.
Well, it's all based on how the board is deliberating on those requests. And if you want us to research it, we certainly can do so, but we most likely would be looking at what are the typical things that you're allowing to be intruding.
Right.
As opposed to just the, the overall question, should there be intrusions into a natural feature setback where there's a value to that, because it's a protection, and it's a filtering, it's 25 feet of filtering before you get to the wetland. So it's purifying the storm water before it gets to the wetland, is the intention behind it. So when you're adding those impervious surfaces, you're kind of eliminating that opportunity.
Well, I had trouble with the one tonight, but you know, then you throw in Eagle and all the other review and the...
Exactly.
Well, I'm also a little less concerned when you're dealing with what's basically a huge marsh. Yes, that really wasn't... And a few, you know...
And that was the other thing that threw me.
That marsh, that marsh wasn't going to be severely impacted by what they were planning on doing. It wasn't right up to the waterline.
No.
So you guys are still deliberating exactly on the case as it's presented?
Right, the case by case.
Yeah, I mean, case by case.
We just answered that right there.
That's where the value add comes in.
No, 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 but I just, I just thought maybe there'd be more, as Patty was sort of saying, but it doesn't matter.
We still want to be able to...
Well, although we've had a lot of them that have simply been, we want to put grass in that area.
Yes.
And a lot of those have been approved, and that sort of goes against the whole concept of the environmental feature setback too. But on the other hand, it does provide some ability to, you know, clean up the water before it gets to the wetlands. So question is, would we want to allow only grass in that area or something? I don't know.
I think it's a case by case.
I don't know.
I think we need that opportunity.
You know, there's sort of been a history of a lot of them being granted, so that, you know, you have...
That's what I'm saying. It just seemed, I don't know, maybe I'm remembering it wrong.
I know, it's a difficult thing.
It seems like they're getting more, I mean, we did one that I voted against, it was a whole basketball court, but they said they were putting in this impervious, you know, tiles on the floor. It was going to be okay, and, you know, they didn't have any other land because they were right on a lake, and they wanted this, everybody was against it. So it just... I think we need to look at whether or not trash cans can be stored outside. Yeah, I did not like that. I didn't like it either.
I can tell you, one of my communities, no way, okay? And you better not put that trash can out before this time, and you better have it back in by that time. I clarified that, that it can't be...
Can't be visible.
Stored in public view.
But that, that entire, that entire situation was, careful what you wish for. Yeah. Well, because you guys brought me around on that, otherwise I was going to go, no, like, ooh, it's worse, because he was right. You could just take everything down. And then just put up some arborvitae, because it has to be screened, but put up some arborvitae. No, no, it doesn't have to. The trash can, the trash can...
Can't be visible.
Can't be visible from public view, which means that you stick it behind a bush.
You have to screen them somehow.
Well, the front of the house.
And frankly, if you're going to store trash cans outside, it should be something that's a little more difficult for critters to get into. Not that they won't climb up a small fence, or a small wall, but, you know, you don't need to be encouraging skunks and other such animals.
Well, that's what the neighbors were concerned about.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. Thanks for the chocolate.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, very thoughtful.
Very thoughtful.